I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order. If you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Where's our flag? There we are. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Do we have a change?
No.
I thought we had an executive session.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, it is, okay.
So moved?
Second.
Jenny, will you please call the roll? I didn't have you call the roll originally. I apologize.
Probably want to have it called the roll first.
In our new place.
Just say yes or here. Just tell me which one.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
And Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. So, we good? So, we will be back after we have a brief executive session. I apologize that we're excusing ourselves for a moment. I'm not used to these new mics.
So, we only did a motion and we approved the agenda, but we haven't done the executive session yet, right?
Okay, so we need to still --
Now we need a motion for executive session.
A motion to move into executive session. All right. So do I have a motion to move into executive session?
I feel like we should say second at the same time. Second.
You can say that.
Good luck recording that one, Jenny.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
All right.
All right.
Thank you for everybody's indulgence as we did that. I apologize for the delay. Is Jenny's computer back?
Yep, I'm ready.
All right. With that, actually, I'll turn it over to Matt for superintendent's comments.
I'll go ahead and forego comments tonight just because we have a lot of things on the agenda and Mr. Pesarch is going to speak here in just a minute, so.
Jenny, do you have any comments?
No, same here. I'll just give my time to Mr. Pesarch.
All right, we'll go into transportation.
You're up.
I apologize.
On the agenda tonight, we have an agreement with Peterman Transportation to provide transportation for the district again for the next five years. We went through a request for proposal process. We had three qualified bids that came in. We narrowed it down to two. And within the RFP itself, once we received them, we had the ability to negotiate with the vendors that submitted qualified proposals, which we did. It came down to Peterman and North American Central Bus. And with that, we were able to reduce our ongoing expenses by a little over $2 million a year by going through the RFP process for next year. We will still need to look at how that will impact us going forward as far as next year with the realignment of the buildings. We may have some adjustments to the routes for next year. And another additional factor that we need to consider is the age of our fleet that's owned by the board. Currently, we have a fleet that is partially owned by the board and the other part is owned by Peterman. So, as the buses from the board age out and become older, they become inefficient and a lot more costly to maintain. And Peterman will buy new buses for us and put them into the fleet. And with that, there's an additional cost for the route when a Peterman bus is added and replaces a board bus. We're looking at about 34 buses in the near future that need to replace that are currently owned by the board.
How many buses do we have now, Chris?
How many?
Buses altogether, roughly?
We have a little over 180 buses. We have 151 daily routes right now.
Thank you.
So, Chris, how does that work to -- geez, I feel like I'm really loud. The buses that are currently board-owned and not Peterman-owned, we will have to eventually purchase buses through Peterman? That -- how's that --
What will happen is Peterman will put the capital outlay and purchase those buses, and they'll amortize that over the life of that bus. So, there'll be a slight increase for that daily rate for that bus compared to a bus that's already in the fleet.
Okay.
So, that's how they do that. They increase their daily rate a little bit to absorb that cost of that new bus where we don't have to lay those capital dollars out to buy that new bus.
But they currently maintain both?
Correct. They maintain the Lakota fleet and the Peterman-owned fleet.
I know we've talked at different times about cameras or tracking. Are there any changes in any of that in this contract?
All the buses will have cameras like they currently do. They'll all have the GPS tracker. We're looking at replacing all the radios to digital radios. Right now, we've got half that are digital, half that are analog, so they'll replace all that. And we've also looked, too, at looking at Wi-Fi on some of the buses as well going forward during the pilot to see if it makes sense to have Wi-Fi on some of the buses, maybe for athletics to go on field trips or to band going on trips that maybe can have Wi-Fi access to do homework or something while you're on the bus. Like they want --
That's why they're going to use the Wi-Fi.
Right. So, you know. So, we're going to look into that and we're working with Todd Wesley and his team, looking at if we need to do that, put buses in different areas to get Wi-Fi access for the community with the one-to-one rollout going forward. Some families may not have access. Maybe we can use a bus to help create access points for people in some communities. So, going through a lot of different scenarios, so those are options that we could have before us going forward.
Other questions for Chris? What about notification for if a bus is running late?
We are working on that. We're going to work through Bessie Fuller and Lauren and their group to try to make sure we communicate how that's going to work. They do have a tracker that will allow us to do that. It is ready to go, but we didn't want to launch that this year if we were going to change vendors and have a whole new system to have to learn after one year. But now that, we're going to stay with Peterman. We feel comfortable we can launch that for the start of next school year.
Great. All right.
So, we've talked about looking for savings. I'm sorry. I think I'm on --
We've talked about looking for savings within the budget and possibly restoring some forms of budget because that -- or bussing because families have continued to comment about that and that they're concerned about it. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yep. We've discussed having Chris look into if we can restore any bussing services and have that priced out.
Yeah, I would have to work with Jenny and her team to make sure. We'd have to look at the big picture, see how it fits into a five-year forecast. If we want to go with that route, we'd have to make a decision relatively soon because they would have to acquire the additional assets to have the buses ready and get that routing done. And that way, we'd have a better understanding of the true cost. We have a good estimate right now what it would be, but we need to run those routes and maybe look at some efficiencies that if we would add freshman bussing or add bussing beyond what we have now, we want to make sure it's the most efficient routing possible. So, to start from scratch, to do that would be the best way to do it and not try to do it mid-year.
And hopefully, we would look at something we could sustain that wouldn't change when we change the configuration.
Lot of moving pieces.
Right.
And have we determined that we could get approval at the state level to do one grade level? If we just wanted to do freshmen instead of --
Yes, there's school districts that do. I know Fairfield does freshman and sophomore, so the state has allowed just to do certain aspects. But once you provide transportation to Lakota students, you've got to provide a like service to non-Lakota students that go to private or parochial schools.
And I did specifically ask that question to ODE last week.
There you go.
I did ask that question to ODE and got the same answer. We could do just one grade level.
That seems to be different thinking than what we've gotten in the past. So, it would be a waiver of some sort through ODE?
I don't think you need a waiver. There's no requirement to provide any transportation to high schools, so whatever we decide to provide, we provide. We just got to provide like service for all residents. So, anybody that goes to a non-Lakota school that's a freshman would have to --
That seems to be changed.
So, I thought we were told if we offer freshman bussing, we had to offer more than that grade level.
We were told that at one point.
That is not the case. The case would be, it would be more of a policy practice for the board and the administration to discuss. If we are providing transportation to non-Lakota students to, let's say, Moeller or Mount Notre Dame, and there's plenty of room on the bus, and I have a sophomore that wants to ride with their sibling, but we'd have to say no to that sophomore because we only provide to freshmen even though there's plenty of room on the bus.
Right.
So, it becomes an issue where we need to work through that piece. And the same thing with families here at Lakota. You know, there's plenty of room on the bus perhaps. Why can't my sophomore ride? It's a little bit different here because we have different campuses, but we would have to navigate through that as a board and as a district, how we want to handle that going forward.
Because I think we'd have to -- I mean, I think we're still going to get some community pushback on sophomores because they also do not drive.
Correct.
I mean, so if we --
And again, we used to get pushback when we had empty buses that were going out or partially filled buses, and we tried to get people to sign up just for those kids who needed transportation, but then everybody still signed up because they said, "What if Johnny's car breaks down? I still want them to be on the route." So, I know we've talked about in the past if it was possible to charge like a very small fee just so we truly only get those who needed it to sign up and use the transportation. But is there any ability? You know, I know we've talked about that, but is that something we could lobby for when we talk to our legislator? And there's no will to look at that even on a small fee?
That's the right way to say it, actually. It's a part of Ohio Administrative Code that there are not enough districts suffering with those issues to want to make a change to it.
Yeah.
That was from Senator Cooley.
So, just to kind of encapsulize what we're talking about, it sounds like the contract has some improvements in it and some functionality and logistics. It's a cost savings. And then it sounds like you're charging the two of us and Chris to look at what other options are in the future.
I think we had our community to explore.
To look at it, at least, yeah.
That's what I'm --
And how, yeah, work through the whole sibling can't ride to Mount Notre Dame when --
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Chris.
No problem. Thanks, Chris.
And to Peterman for the contract and your service. All right, we've come to the first opportunity for public comment. I have one person who signed in. The first opportunity for public comment is only for items that are on the agenda. I don't know if the person who signed in, Lee Redkey, if you'd like to speak at this opportunity. Okay.
My name is Lee Redkey. I live at 6609 Chessy Drive, Westchester Township. Matt Miller, I'd like to thank you for that community chat. It was the first one I'd ever attended and the board supports, so learned a lot.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the board member was there and it was really very good. My question to you tonight, the LEA contract is on the agenda for approval. And I know I'm a central committee member and I do walk my precinct, and one of the residents mentioned that Brad, that you had been a principal at one time and that your wife is currently a teacher at Lakota. So, I'm wondering tonight with that LA contract, LEA contract, if it's a conflict of interest and if you're planning on reclusive yourself from the vote?
Yes, I will be.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
No, wait. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time? Come on up to the mic. Please state your name and address.
Rusty Jesse, 6564 Justice Lane, Liberty Township. And I told her I was going to ask, because I'd heard the same thing. That was one thing. But as a parent of an eighth grader and such you're discussing, you know, I think you should be very cautious with that because as a member of the community, you know, he's going to save $2 million, and I would almost rather that $2 million go into, you know, a reserve fund of some sort to cover the capital costs of new bussing when that has to be negotiated with Peterman or whatever is deemed necessary than giving it back to my daughter and her friends for a year. And then the kids that are on the seventh, eighth grade bus, well, when they come around, then their parents are going to have to start all over with the carpooling to get to the freshman building. So, I just, you know, it was a big thing. You know, I've talked to, you know, Ben at the Y on multiple occasions when the bussing was taken away from -- and it's not just here. It's all over the Midwest when that was what happened. So, I just think you should really tread cautiously as far as putting a non-required, is that the right word? But something that you guys have some flexibility on and that the community has come to probably deal with better now than was prepared, you know, five or six years ago whenever it all started. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board at this time? Seeing no one, would you like to address that any further or would you like to?
Yeah, I mean, my, yes, my wife works for the district. She's part of the teaching group here at Lakota. And yeah, I'm going to be recusing myself from the vote for the LEA contract today.
All right. And Rusty, yes, it is always a challenge. We will balance that, the choices that, and do you want to save the money and put that aside for other future needs or balancing the needs of our students? And we certainly do hear a lot about bussing, but we also, we struggle with that of, do you spend the money on those bussing needs for those students or do you hold that money in reserve for other future academic needs or other needs that we have? So, we appreciate that comment, and that's certainly something that weighs on all of our minds with all of our financial decisions that we're making. The best way to utilize and stretch our taxpayer dollars as best that we can, and we certainly want to do our very best to be good stewards of every dollar that our taxpayers entrust to us and make sure that we stretch those and use those in the most efficient way that we can. So, we appreciate those comments and we'll certainly take that into consideration. So, with that, we will go into Board Reports, Community Engagement Committee. Kelly, do you want to start with anything or?
We had a community conversation with area faith leaders last Thursday, and it went really well. They were very eager to talk to us and get involved and do what they can as an organization to help the students of Lakota. That was our last one for the year because the spring gets kind of busy, so we don't have another one till next year. And there is one more fanfare.
Monday.
Monday at Woodland.
Woodland?
Eight twenty-five, I believe. Eight twenty-five. I'm saying eight twenty-five.
And then we also have the Barbassu Volunteer Spirit Award winners will be recognized at West at nine, starting at nine o'clock. And that's always a wonderful event to come out to because we've, every school has a winner that they choose to recognize for all the wonderful volunteering that they do. So, it's a great day to just honor those who have given so much to all of our schools. And then there's one district-wide winner that is chosen.
It's Wednesday, Julie. You didn't say the date.
I'm sorry.
It's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday. So, it's a wonderful opportunity to recognize all the great volunteer efforts that are put in, and we have so many hours that are given to our district for free, and we certainly appreciate that. So, Butler Tech?
Butler Tech met this week. The board is continuing to look at options for further development of the Bioscience Campus. They did have a military ceremony involving all 10 school districts on April 9th, and it looks like Hamilton School District will be coming onboard with Butler Tech, providing their career technical services, and that's in process now.
Great. Finance Committee? Jenny, anything?
No, we are working. Mr. Miller and I have been discussing the joining of the Finance Committee and the Superintendent's Business Advisory, and we've even discussed like one of the first projects that we want to address with them. So, we're in the process of making sure we have those committee members, the right committee members on that committee, and we'll be reaching out to them soon.
Great.
I also want to kind of dovetail some of the internships that we've been talking about and having this committee also help us get the word out about that because I think that's a natural item.
That's great.
Legislative Committee? Jenny, Matt?
I defer to you, but do you want to talk about NSBA?
Please, go ahead.
As this board knows, I'm sorry.
Don't forget the goat.
I'm going to not mention the goat. The board and Mrs. Logan and I met at NSBA, so we were able to give Lakota perspective on a lot of national things that are going on in school boards, public school boards. We went to a lot of sessions detailing innovation, but also safety, security, finances. I think we kind of hit and divided and conquered a lot of those activities. So, I appreciate the board's efforts going there. The only other thing that I would mention, and I think it falls under legislative, is to pay attention of the news concerning ECO that came out again today in regards to some of the funding. So, I encourage you to follow that along and some of the money issues that they're still dealing with, and it seems like it's worse now than what it was, so.
Subcommittee, we had a full committee meeting last Thursday. Subcommittee meeting is coming up for the one that I sit on for the School Funding Task Force. We have one set for May 1st, and Linda mentioned, you know, maybe it would be a good time for us to take a field trip as the Legislative Committee and go up, and you could sit in on that Subcommittee meeting. We could also make appointments with OSBA and sit down with their lobbyists and come together as a group. So, let me know if you're available on May 1st, and we'll make that happen.
You may.
That's all we have.
All right. As a follow-up, just on NSBA, we thought maybe we could do a debrief at a later point and share some of the great sessions since we all did sort of split up and see different things, that that might be a good way to share out with each other some of the things that we learned. So, Diversity Committee?
The only thing that I'll add, and I think I mentioned it before, is we are working on scheduling a retreat for some staff members in regards to low-nine, and so that's coming up here in the summer months. So, that's it for this month.
First item for approval is the LEA contract. Do I have a motion for approval of the LEA contract?
I'll move if we approve the contract.
Do I have a second? Hearing none, Chair will second. Jenny, or any discussion?
I have discussion. Is it, is it okay? I have looked at the contract, and now the financials from Jenny, thank you very much, which look way better than I originally thought. I can tell you, I'm torn. I realize the importance of the school district to the community as a whole. Part of that is keeping and hiring the best teachers. The increase that's presented in the contract, I think, is a little too high. It's slightly above what my threshold was. However, as a businessperson, I do realize that if we go back to the table, it's going to spend a lot more time, costs a lot more money, and at the end of the day, we're going to end up in the same place. So, I just want you to know, I've given this an enormous amount of thought, and I've gotten counsel from many people, many of the people in the public as well. And I've reached the decision, so I just, I want you to know, I don't take this lightly, so.
I don't think any of us take it lightly, really. I mean, it's a long process.
Well, it's very complicated. It's a lot more than just approving an increase.
Right.
You know, in the past, the board that exists before, under Mrs. O'Connor's leadership, we changed the whole structure.
Right.
The steps changed, and people need to realize that, too. And sometimes in the public sector versus the private sector, things are magnified. Some of these increases would never happen in the private sector. However, in the public sector, people start at a lower point in most cases anyway.
Right.
I get that. I understand our cost of living is one of the lowest of like districts. I get that as well. So, with that, I'll pass it on to somebody else.
I had some, excuse me, I had several comments I wanted to make as well. We've had a tremendous amount of discussion as a board. I did set the threshold of my comfort level with you early on, and I have not wavered once from that on what that needed to be in terms of what I feel is financial stability. I greatly respect the work that happens with our teachers and with our staff at all levels. And we do want to retain staff and attract staff that want to be part of the Lakota of the future. I think we will, and I believe that they should be fairly compensated for their efforts and their contributions. I also feel that I need to consider the obligation that I have to represent those that placed me here. They placed me here to keep watch over and provide a high-quality education for our children, for those that will become our future leaders and scholars and educators and business owners. And they also placed me here to watch over their hard-earned tax dollars. It's taken a lot of years of hard work, and I have the gray hair underneath the chemicals to show it, to reach our current level of financial stability. And I want to thank the staff because you have played a role in that achievement. Over the past decade, though, we've learned a really hard lesson through difficult decisions and significant challenges that impacted both our students and our families and our staff. There are not unlimited funds to support a Cadillac education model for this district. And the total of 6% compounded per year for the next three years, including a base raise, a cost of living increase, and a stipend exceeds the five-year forecast, what we planned for in the five-year forecast. The reserve came about as a result of fiscally conservative policies and the restoration of taxpayer faith in our district's ability to provide an excellent return on their investment. My concern is that I've heard a lot of conversations recently amongst the board that we need to begin spending down the large reserve balance, that we don't really need to set that kind of money aside, and that kind of thinking deeply concerns me. There are realities and consequences that aren't always recognized in the unexpected. I'll give you an example in our biennial budget process that we face every two years. And there are always cuts that are a distinct possibility and, in fact, have been a reality for us in the past recent years. I think there's a lack of experience on occasion as well for those that have not made the tough cuts, that haven't made the tough calls, that haven't had to lay off teachers and staff, that haven't had to make cuts that still impact families and students today. And furthermore, at the forefront of my thinking is that this is only one piece of a much broader picture. This is our first employee group in negotiations. We still need to consider raises for the unionized support staff, the non-unionized staff, and our administrators. There are other pieces of the broader picture that we have to consider that we still don't have a price tag for, security and safety measures, initiatives the superintendent would like to implement that will directly impact and benefit Lakota's teachers and students. There's a price tag there that we don't know yet. I am and I was prepared to offer a decent raise. I don't see enough added opportunities for students and recognition of solutions that we need to meet student needs to justify going over a threshold amount that I haven't wavered on once in all the discussions that we've had with the board and the administration. I can't in good conscience support this level of increase, although I do believe you deserve an increase that exceeds the amount that was budgeted and forecasted for in the planning
I'm good. Do you want to say anything?
I mean, I don't have really anything to add other than the fact that, you know, my voice is all I have. I don't have a vote in this, and I proudly say that. I'm honored to be a husband to somebody that works in the district. I'm honored to be somebody that's sitting up here that has worked in the district. I'm honored to be somebody that graduated from this district. I'm a proud member of the Westchester community. I'm a proud taxpayer of this community. I invest my funds into this district every single year, and I want a return on that investment. And I get it. I understand. We don't want a levy. Nobody up here wants to go after a levy. Nobody wants a levy. I don't want to knock on doors. I don't want to beg for money. None of us want to do that. No, we don't want to spend down every penny in the -- No, we don't want to spend down every penny in the district. We don't want to do that. What I want to do is I want to look at the money that's in our five-year forecast, and I want to say, how can we take every single penny and invest it into the future, to my daughter who's going to be in this district, and to the thousands of kids in this district? I support our teachers. I support our staff. I support our community. I felt a little, a little, I'll just leave it there. We worked hard. Both sides of the table came together. There was great dialogue. Is it perfect? Probably not. Will we get the perfect? Probably not, because guess what? I don't live in a perfect world. But heck, I sure do want a perfect community eventually. I want to work towards that.
I agree with you, Matt, and I think it needs to take into account all aspects of our community. But I agree with you, and I respect your point of view.
Thank you.
But I think we did do that when we sat down, and I think we did take all aspects into the community. I think that, you know, again, I feel like the spending down was directed to Brad and I and the inexperience, because we are new, but I feel like we both have a lot of knowledge. And I think we both came to the table, all of us in good conscience, and I don't think anybody, again, wants to spend $117 million tomorrow. But we do want to retain the staff and the teachers that we have. But again, I respect your opinion as well.
So for me, when I looked at how I came to this, I looked at where we were relative to other districts, where we wanted to be on the scale, and how to be competitive. And certainly, when I joined the board, my first month was laying off teachers, so I certainly know I don't want to go back there. It was an awful first month, and again, nobody wants, nobody wants to be there again. But I look at where we were on that scale. I look at where we were told our competitive districts were when they look at other school districts and where their competitive labor practices or competitive contracts were. And I also look at where we heard from both of our community and our staff about what was important, and that was student opportunities, as well as more time to collaborate and more time for instruction. So for me, a very important time was extending the school day, and that was very important for me in this contract. And so getting the additional time in our school day for not only staff to collaborate and spend time, but being able to add in specials for our kids, because we heard over and over again how kids who may not be academically successful, you know, found a way to be successful in art or music and feel good about going to school and other things. And I feel like this contract allowed us to get that extra, just that extra bit of time. And every bit of time, I feel like we're fighting for minutes. And so, again, you know, is anything perfect, and does everybody get what they want in any contract? No, but that's what negotiations are about. And I feel good, and I feel like, you know, neither side is ever going to feel like they got 100%, and that's where you end up with the contract. And that's why it was close on the LEA side, and, you know, and we're going to potentially be close. And that's why, that's where we're going to end up. So again, I think we're all very, very conscious about every taxpayer dollar and wanting to invest it to the best of our ability to make sure we're using it, using it as judiciously as we can and investing it where it needs to be invested, to make sure we attract and retain the very best that we can. So that's where I land in my voice, so. Any other discussion or anything else anyone else would like to say? So with that, Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
I abstain.
Mrs. O'Connor?
No.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
All right. With that, we moved our treasurer's recommendations, A through C. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Superintendent, superintendents' recommendations, whoever you are over there, approved personnel items. I'm going to take item A separate. Do I have a motion for superintendent, superintendent's item A?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I will be abstaining from this vote as well. My wife is on the list for a continuing contract.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Level?
I abstain.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve superintendent's recommendations, B through D? So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would like to say we have the paving contract as well as transportation. I was glad to see we were doing some paving. I know some of our paving could use some help in some of our parking lots, so glad to see that will be done this summer, so.
Yes.
With that, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. We now come to our second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who
would like to speak, they may do so at this time. Seeing no one, I will now move to closing comments. I will start with Matt.
I think I'm good, just in the sake of time for this evening with our next executive session coming up.
All right. Jenny?
Same here.
Linda?
Save everyone time.
All right. Brad?
Oh, I'm good.
Not sure about the new digs here, but I have no other comments. Thanks.
No comment. I like the new dig, though. I like, I said no comment, then I commented. I like the sign, though. A little chilly, though.
All right. A couple announcements I wanted to make. We had 66 students from East and 17 kids from West go to the HOSA, which is the Future Health Professionals National Competition in Columbus. And of those, we had 25 kids from East and 11 kids from West qualified to go to the National Leadership Conference in Dallas, which will be June 27th to 30th. So congratulations to all those students who qualified for that. Also, May 3 will be our Parade of Graduates, which is hosted by our Champions for Change, which is a wonderful event that we started last year. So if anyone, they go back to their elementary schools to show them, show our elementary kids kind of a model, what can be and what the future is, and show them what their next step is going to be. We'd also like to thank our Lodi Department for the planting relationships, which happened yesterday, April 22, on Earth Day. We had a lovely event in the square that happened. And then also for Destination Imagination, we had some teams that qualified and placed eighth overall in the region, in the state competition out of a field of 18 teams. So congratulations to those teams as well. So just wanted to say that. And with that, we will now be moving into executive session. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. And we do not plan to take any action when we come out of executive session.
Thank you.